Please join in your pleasurable ease.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Let's move to public input. We have one, Susan. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. I'm Susan Aukak, if you all know me. I am a co-chair of the Linsburgs' Guts Putts and Centennial for 2019. So Betty Nelson is co-chairing with me. I'm going to read to you our general purpose. Our specific purpose, as stated in our bylaws, is to sponsor and support the celebration of the founding of the City of Linsburg in 1869 and recognize the achievements of her founders, their descendants, and contemporary citizens 150 years later. I'm pleased to tell you we have a great team in place. As I said, Betty Nelson is a co-chair. And our treasurer is Matt Stula. Joyce Peterson is our secretary. Other team members are Jim Riddle, Tim Stewart, and Marc Roy. So our committee, our leadership team is full. We're pressing ahead with several ideas. We hold our account at People's Bank and Trust. And we have a 501(c)(3) in progress. Eric Anderson is working on that for us. We've looked into several options of the best way to do that and/or the best way to hold our funds. And it's been determined that it just makes financial sense to go ahead with the 501(c)(3). So that's what we're going to do. We've been working on a logo. Megan Clausen has been designing some things for us. And we're down to two options. So once we take a look at those and tweak them a little bit, we'll be able to choose one. After that, we'll go ahead and update our Facebook page and be able to move forward with some correspondence. In the planning weeks, in the future weeks, we plan to introduce the team to the community and area. We do have a Facebook page that will update with the team members, bios, photos, and so the community can get familiar with who is on this team. Several ideas that we have in mind. We're working with Ann Carr on the possibility of a editorial book. It's a glossy nine-by-twelve, beautifully designed book that they have in mind. She's working with Becky Tanner and Dave Webb, who happen to have written, excuse me, 999 Kansas characters, published by the Kansas Heritage Center. It's an award-winning book. So they come highly recommended by Ann. So we'll move forward possibly with that once we determine the final price and what kind of funds we're going to need to raise for that. We'll need some major corporate funding for that. We have some ideas of a celebrity chef coming to town for an event. So Kathy Richardson is moving forward on that. Lots of ideas, so we'll throw them around and we'll keep it updated. Any questions?
So you say your leadership is full. Are there other committees or subcommittees in that that you'll be looking for out with in the future?
Absolutely, yeah. Once we determine what events will be and the different things that we'll be doing that year, we'll tap into the committees for that, yeah.
Okay. And I guess you're working on a logo and then you'll share that with CBD, we'll have it on our site and all of those other things as we go forward and stuff.
Yeah. And we actually have been communicating a call a little bit on just her ideas and trying to kind of to mesh what the city is currently using with, you know, what direction we should go and how those can be cooperative to some extent.
How can we, as mayor and council, help you support you, Susan?
Well, you know, I don't know that, I don't know what to say right now, other than as soon as the Facebook page gets updated and share that information with as many people and invite your friends to take a look at that and like it and follow it. And, you know, any chance you have to speak to it. And we'll keep you updated so you can update.
Susan, have you decided? Will you celebrate in 18 up to 19 or will you start celebrating in 19?
We'll start celebrating in 19. There may be some free events that will be actually more fundraising in nature prior to 2019. And we have to do several things in 2019, not just one big thing. It would probably culminate in a big event toward fall. And of course, there's still many for us that year. And we do hope that everything that happens that year will in some way give a nod to the 150th, even though it might not be an event, but we are sponsoring specifically. And so we will communicate with groups so they know that that's coming up and be sure to include that, you know.
Sounds exciting.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, to you and your committee for all your hard work. We'll look forward to seeing what comes from the committee and their ideas and all of that. And I assume that if people have ideas, you know, they should send them to you, you know, what about this or that or?
Oh, yeah, they already are. It's really great. We appreciate it, so.
Good, good. Thank you very much. Any other public input today? Seeing none, let's move to amendments to the agenda. I have one. We're going to move item number eight under Old Business. We're going to move that to the 15th meeting of February. Please note that as an agenda change. Any other changes to the agenda? Does that take a vote to change the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Can the mayor make the motion?
I move we change the number eight, Old Business, to February 15.
And move, is there a second?
Second.
Bill, just for my own, can the mayor make a motion?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Why are we doing this?
To give everybody an opportunity to be here to discuss that.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Mayor's report. I want to start off with a card that was received from Bethany College. Mayor Taylor and City Council, thank you, thank you all for your generous support to our college. It is greatly appreciated by the entire Bethany family, Robcar, Stogra, sincerely Warren Ken and the D'Anton team. So wanted to read that for you, based on actions that were taken last time. Also would like to thank everybody that did attend the Capitol, the meeting there, or the all-day legislating sessions, and I hope you found it fruitful visiting with legislators and convincing them of what Linsburg's legislating packet was all about and how it should oversee anything that they're working on.
Convincing is probably a strong word.
But I do appreciate you taking time out of your day and what you normally do and that to make that trip down and be there and bring the word from what we see as agenda items that are going to affect Linsburg in many different ways, the citizens of Linsburg. Greg sent me a note here about the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference in October. Is anybody planning that far out, October 8th and 10th, Overland Park? The reason he's saying this is that they need to talk about room reservations at this point. So who thinks they might go in October?
Halloween, April.
Three is close enough, five.
I'll write it.
Cory?
Yes.
Okay.
Four, the two staffs, so six.
Six total?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Greg. Meetings that are coming up, just the normal council meetings and some other recreation, Substrum Advisory, be aware of those. Let's move to the consent agenda. What is your desire?
We can agree.
And move, is there a second? Did I hear a second? I'm sorry, that's email. Email, seconded. Roll call, please.
Kelly, Cass Lang.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Excuse me, David.
Yep.
Eamonn.
Yes.
Becky. Yes.
What I might do, just to discuss about what we did, is appoint somebody with your approval letter to the CBD board. Ollie, want to give us a brief scenario of that? Your committee.
We have had a little transition again as Lately went off the board and so with a movement, so we decided it would be best to ask for a replacement to come in. And Erica D'Amber has agreed to fill this position and go ahead and take this place if it's approved by council. We think because of her ability, she's looking for some things to the board, and it would be really good for us to figure out going. Has a lot of good ideas and is actually very excited. She told me a letter, she's approved tonight and wants us to come tomorrow to meet. That's good. That's a positive thing. So anyway, that's a little background.
Thank you, Ollie. She was approved with the consent agenda, so please let her know and look forward to her being a part of the CBD.
But she's not here this evening.
But she has her picture.
I know we have her picture.
She's on check.
But even so, we've asked many times to have the people we're appointing.
Let's go to planning and zoning on the seventh. Gary, do you wish to speak to us about that?
January 5th, planning zoning, held a public hearing on a rezone request for what we know is 216 North Harrison, the vacant property located across the street from Scott's Turf Way, the rezone. It was actually made by Spadok and Bach, but on behalf of the potential owner of the property, Copman Pharmacy, who has an option to purchase the property continuing this rezone. There was some public attendance, but no public input, and the Planning and Zoning Commission had a brief discussion and passed the, or voted for a recommendation to approve the rezone c)(3) from Arthur. This will allow Auburn to open up a business as pharmacy at that location.
What is your desire on ordinance? Forty-nine, sixty-four?
I move we pass ordinance forty-nine, sixty-four.
Second. And move, is seconded. Any further discussion or question, Gary, from P and Z?
This includes all the properties in that whole area, right?
There are three parcels, and I believe the owner will proceed to replat it as a single parcel.
Okay. Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lang?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's move on to new business now. Fire truck repair. Ken?
The fire truck that was involved in a fender bender at the safety center on Olds here a while back. It's been quite a while back. Several of the members, it didn't really have anything to do with fighting fire time and still functions, but several of the firemen, since they use it in the parades and tours, would like to have it back to its original lesser.
Yes. So they're requesting that we purchase these parts so that we can fix it to look nice.
What is your desire on the fire truck repairs?
I move we approve not to exceed $1,263.34 to Spartan Fender Red.
That's correct.
Okay.
And move, is seconded. Discussion? Ten, where's the funding coming from?
Come on, come on.
Quality is why I'm not over the fire department.
Additional questions for ten?
Second. Sorry, ten seconds.
Roll call, please.
Kelly? Yes. Lang?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ten, remain there. The next item is EMT classes. We're going to have someone tell us about them. Ken?
We currently have eight students in the EMT class that will be giving their time to our service if they can pass the class. But there is a fee that we pay for questions sent, and the amount is listed. We will receive a grant from the state that will take care of most of that, so I'm really looking to be refunded for the majority of the amount that we have to pay out. We would pay this out first, and then we'll receive a refund.
So far, I'm reading here, Sam, you're asking tonight for funding for $10,599.40 from the Hutchison Community College with the idea that that will be reimbursed back to a possible net amount of $1,300.99? Is that correct?
Of $1,400.
$1,400, okay. What is your desire on the EMT class funding?
I'll make the motion that we pay a total amount of $10,599.40, $99.40 to Hutchison Community College.
And move, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And move, is seconded. Further discussions?
So when we do this, is there any type of agreement that they would serve as a volunteer for us for any period of time or does it work?
Yeah, they sign up to your contract.
Okay.
And if they fail to do that, then they have to pay us back. Have we had that situation? Yes. Have we gone after them to get the refund? Have we gotten the refund? Yes.
If you had mentioned $1,399.40 earlier, plus $400 in testing fees.
Is there any chance we won't get the grant from the state?
Pretty confident that we'll receive the grant.
Does Brown back control that?
You know.
Maybe.
I'm sure it's going to be on the way, so.
Any further discussion?
It's a little short again to me, this stuff.
Roll call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lang?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried. That's a great, I think it's a great deal, and I'm excited to see that program continue where we, you know, home ground EMTs and all of that. It really helps the city out and helps the crew out. So Gary stepped up now to talk about resolution 0516, housing tax credit application. Gary?
I believe you're familiar with the Free Fire Development Plan to build low moderate income housing on New Leannix, piece of ground on the north end of Kansas. At the end of the week, Kelly Robbie is in attendance, by the way. At the end of the week, he will be applying to Kansas Housing Resource Corporation for tax credit financing. Part of the point scoring on that grant application is resolution support from the city council. We've done this in the past. We did it for a group that planned to build, let's see, their low income housing, tax credit financed homes. On the northwest side of town, those projects were never approved by K H R C. I believe Kelly has a pretty good chance of getting this one approved. In fact, it's coming up in a project that was approved last year in Mount Ridge, Kansas, where it's under construction. The project involves 12 duplexes, 24 units, and it is geared towards workforce family housing. It's not limited to seniors, so at least that's the plan that I mentioned. If you have any questions, Kelly, he's here to talk about it, or I'd be glad to answer any questions. But I requested the support by passing the resolution.
What's your desire on resolution 0516?
I'll make the motion to pass resolution 0516.
Second.
And move, is seconded. Questions of Gary or Kelly?
All we're doing here is providing notice support for this.
That's right.
We're not committing any funds.
No, not. In fact, I don't really foresee committing any funds until we get closer to a development agreement and then, you know. The plan that, and we've talked about this, rural housing incentive districts are set up to fund the infrastructure costs for these projects. They capture property tax on the incremental value that's created by the project, which shows that the cash flow paid for the infrastructure that's built. It's a great way of getting the county and the school district to help support the project in building out the infrastructure. I see that we'll sit on this and wait for Kelly's successful application. We'll know that late spring. Figure that's late April.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, we're going to wait and see how it comes out. If and when that happens, then we get real busy and we start working on development agreements, designing infrastructure. And when would you expect to be building out infrastructure? Late summer?
Huh?
Yeah. This is a pretty quick project. The last time we talked about this, I think it was two years later when they were planning on building. So I'm real happy to say that we could be seeing this.
Coming in, 12 duplexes?
Twelve duplexes.
Twenty-four total units?
On approximately five acres. Track, then actually will be about 20 acres, providing additional.
Is that close to the Kansas or close to the Kansas Street side? Is that the?
It's still up in the air.
So this would be only a part of that parcel that we had.
That would be like. That's right.
Kelly, I don't know if you're, how far into it you are. I actually went by the A Street. Have you a, or you're building now? Do you guys have some building here?
In, uh.
McPherson?
Yeah.
Brown, I think they're brown colored, white trim.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Is that a typical, I mean, would that be a build out?
Yeah.
Or are they two-story, one-story?
Here, we're planning on just duplexes, so one-story. Actually, those are more white, they're just without stairs. So I think the restrictions at the side of the purchase in McPherson, we're going to go on two-stores, Mount Ridge, it's all one-story duplex, three, two bedrooms, which will, same thing with McPherson.
Appear to be some duplexes in McPherson. Is that a typical build out for you?
Yeah.
Duplexes that I see there would be something that would.
Yeah, I think, kind of depending on construction costs, they keep going up, and the infrastructure, obviously, but I think we'd probably trend more towards party board exteriors versus vital exteriors. But for the most part, the exteriors and everything would look about the same.
Most of them, you said, two-bedroom?
Two, probably on this one, we're going to have, I think, 14 twos and 10 threes.
Okay.
So some small.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Since it's been a while since we've done anything like this, what's the name of that project out there that we're developing?
Uh, that's going to be the landlord slash developer that'll come up with the.
Is that all done when development stuff is done with the city? Is that how that works?
That'll be the flat process, which may be. Depending on, obviously, certain tax credit financing, but that's where, I mentioned, things get real busy and we'll flatten the ground and name it.
Yeah, as far as naming, I'm very bad with naming things. And in fact, my staff doesn't want me to name things. So I was on your website, actually, looking for like Swedish names and doing translations, so I would definitely look to the city to get me some sort of guy so we can capture the spirit of the city. I wasn't coming up with very unique names. So definitely streets, yeah, the name of our subdivision, the community. We have a kind of a generic template right now, but to the extent it gets approved, I'm certainly value more creative input than I can be. I'm an honest guy. I'm not a name-named guy.
Kelly, with all that's going on in the state and all of that, these tax credits, I mean, is that affected by the economics of Kansas and our.
No, no, actually, the tax credit market right now is probably, since the '86 reform, is the strongest it's ever been. I mean, one of our investors, our investors that invested in Mount Ridge, that's looking at us in a few other projects, based out of San Francisco, is a worldwide insurance company. And in the past, a lot of these companies, they didn't even consider Kansas, so they just, you know, flyer of the state. But now we have, if a tax credit application like this got approved, we'd probably have at least 15 investors lined up to invest in the credits. We try to like hold it down to three or four investors we work with. Last year, two years ago, we sold McPherson credits for, I think, 88 cents. Today, we have letters of intent on this project, over $195 cents. So, and then interest rates are good. So the good news is, is that there's plenty of capital, plenty of equity and debt, very interested in these products. I think I've even had a phone call from a local bank, you know, InTrust and some of the local guys we work with are very interested. So the good news is, in this market, in this climate, to the extent the tax, since our federal credits, so really issues with state Kansas don't impact it. It's, there's such an appetite for these tax credits that to the extent they get approved, unlike '08, '09, we had many challenges, but this year, they get approved, they're basically money in the bank, and we would shift gears quickly to get the project closed under construction. So.
Kelly, who has control of the property itself? I mean, who's doing the leasing? Is that a local office or is that?
Well, our company does all the construction. We do our property management and developments. From a standpoint, we have a fairly high, you know, quality control level that we try to implement our properties. So we have our management company, our construction company. Construction-wise, we try to hire local regionally, to the extent there's folks in the area I know have had challenges, and as most contractors have, just finding work, finding subcontractors that have this problem with McPherson, we've had it in Mount Ridge and other areas, just there's not enough contractors to go around. But to the extent we can take these tax credits and leverage them in the local economy, whether you have, you know, a local lumberyard, somebody that sells furniture, somebody selling appliances, or just local labor, we try to hire local as much as possible. And then on the management side, we take the very hands-on approach to the management. We like to manage and control our own properties so we don't have a third party kind of telling us one thing and we can hear another from the city. So we definitely have a hands-on approach, particularly with the corridor here, where we have a property south of Hutchison. Two projects, actually, we've got a modern income housing application approved in Mount Ridge. We have two projects in Mount Ridge now, along with McPherson. We have projects we'll look at, Salina, Park City, Newton as well. So we have a very strong presence along the corridor here. And, you know, we'll see your folks here at the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation conferences, and Fred's very aware of what's going on here, so I think we have a very good chance to get this approved. And it is the scariest resource in the state of Kansas. So these credits, the state of Kansas gets 6.5 million, 6.7 million credits every year from the federal government. They have to be put in some communities one way or another. It doesn't matter on the state budget, they are going to go to a community and basically take those credits times 10, and that's the amount of equity that comes to these projects. Right now, we're looking at probably 3.8 to 4 million in credits coming to this community. We're looking at a 4.5 million dollar project, so it'd be a, you know, a not bad capital investment for the community. So we're very happy and pleased, you know, a lot of great interaction with the city, a lot of great support thus far, and I really think they have a good application and it's a high probability we get approved here tonight, so.
Are there other questions, Marcella?
Just like to say thank you for coming to that.
Sure, thank you. That is you, no problem. Thank you. Look forward to you being a part of this.
You bet.
What was your last name?
Rabbit. I've got great names.
Rabbitson. Rabbitson.
There's the name.
There's the name.
It's a Czech name, so. Sleep with the Swedes, so.
Well, thank you, Dan, for being here.
You bet.
Roll call.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lang?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Thank you, Gary. Let's move on to IP iPad quotes. I'll let Greg explain this one to us.
At the, like, in January 5th, council, the CDWG was awarded the purchase of 16 iPad Air 2s. When we went to place the order, they didn't honor the quote that was presented, so we have rebid that, have received bids from CDWG, B&amp;H Photo and Video, and Amazon. Amazon was actually the low bidder at $418.99 each, total of $6,703.84. One of the other things that we did is the covers that, the smart covers that were approved originally through CDWG were $34.99 a piece. We found a different smart cover that's more of a portfolio, which several of you have, more of a portfolio-type cover, that is also a smart cover through HD accessory. We were able to get them on sale for $10 a piece. we were able to get them on sale for $10 apiece. And so really, the additional between what was saved over the less costly cover, we would need to approve an additional through Amazon, since the original was approved through CDWG, $162.72 to purchase 16 iPad Air 2s.
What is your desire?
I move we approve this. Additional amount?
For the...
For those computers and the...
Covers, we have the authority to go ahead and...
Oh, yeah, through the amount.
For the computers.
So it's Amazon for $162.72, correct, David?
Correct.
That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and further discussions?
Assuming there's considerable savings going to Amazon versus just going to so on air, McPherson, whatever store they're in. About $70 a unit, take that times 16, you're well over $1,000.
Roll call please.
Becky? Yes. Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Item approved. Item F is Leadership Kansas nominations. We were honored to have both Holly and Greg have been nominated to participate in Leadership Kansas. As you've read in here, it's a competitive process, 500 applications for 40 available slots to go through the program. It involves a year of training, six locations across the state, an orientation process, and the question here tonight is to make sure that we, as a council and mayor, are all on board for one, one or both, I guess, to say, approve a sponsorship of the Linsburg participant in the Leadership Kansas program. I think the key word probably there is Linsburg, city Linsburg participant, would be correct, you see, one would be the amount, it's $1,500 tuition plus cost of travel and lodging and...
So you're needing the motion?
Needing the motion if you feel so desired to do so, Becky?
Sure, I, I don't think it'll be approved, do I put a dollar here in it, $1,500?
$1,500 plus travel expenses.
Plus travel and lodging?
Yeah. Everybody, you heard the motion, it's $1,500 plus travel and lodging, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion, Cory?
First, that's for one.
It's for one.
I guess. If I could add just a little bit about the program, I am an alum of 2012 class of Leadership Kansas, and I did bring a couple of directories, if you think anybody would like to kind of just glance through there, just to see the quality of, of the people that have been through the program.
Are you listed in there, Cory?
I am, I'm a volunteer.
There's an asterisk by my name. That's why I'm gonna go to self quality.
There's, there's definitely an asterisk, but it's one of the oldest lot leadership programs in the country, and actually, a lot of other states modeled their programs after Kansas's. It's an opportunity to not only learn about other parts of the state, but also to, to network and to develop contacts that would, that are city, it's benefited me and my business, and I think it would be even a greater benefit for the city than it was for me.
All right, Cory. Other questions? Roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Motion carried, do not know any executive questions, Greg?
No.
Correct, others, Greg has something, and then we can ask council.
Just to make you aware, contacted on Friday by Anderson Transport Services, what they do is they do specialized truck hauling, and they will be hauling wind turbine equipments, towers, propellers, et cetera, through Linsburg. In the coming week, week and a half, don't know the exact dates, they're leaving out of Iowa, the reason they're coming through Linsburg is because the height of the equipment that they're hauling is taller than the Wells Fargo overpass that goes over 135, so they're getting off at 678, coming down Harrison Cole, heading south and picking up Smoky Valley Road, and then back onto Interstate 135. Reason I bring it to your attention is because potentially, it could cause some traffic disruption, because we're talking vehicles 180 feet long, you know, 15 feet wide. Now, the thing is, they can't travel more than two in a group, that's by state law, so over the next, well, the first, we'll see a total of 15 trucks come through, scattered anywhere from the 8th of February through sometime after the 10th.
180 feet times two trucks, is that longer than our whole town?
Almost.
So Greg, are you saying when we get the new interchange at Wells Fargo for Linsburg, we'll have to make sure that we get that high end?
That's right.
That's what I heard in all that.
Where's their destination?
I don't know. South of here. It's probably just hasn't come up already.
Yeah, we just wanna see a lot of them down the road, so. All right, any others from the council members?
It's raining.
It is raining, so. Motion adjourned.
So.
Second.
Second.
Somebody?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye? Thank you all for being here, thank you in the audience for...